Tenth City of Tuolton Council Work Session. We start off the session tonight with private property impound rates, discussion led by Don Hudson, our Finance Director, and William Sullivan, who is a Management Analyst here in the city. Welcome to you both.
Thank you, Mayor Bubidick, members of the council. My name is Don Hudson. I'm the Assistant City Manager and Finance Director here with the city. And with me this evening is our Management Analyst and Finance, William Sullivan. So back in October of 2013, council adopted TMZ eight dash five, towing from private property, which requires tow companies to get a license to be able to tow off of private property and follow certain rules. In addition, there are maximum rates that they can charge the vehicle owners for any vehicles that are towed. Those rates have not been updated since the ordinance went into effect in 2013. Back this last summer, we received a letter from Beaverton Towing asking to review the rates because they have not been changed. That letter is attached for your review. Back on September 8th, we met in work session presenting this information to you. And at that point, you directed staff to go back, do some research of what neighboring cities and other municipalities in our area were charging and regulating for private property toes. After that meeting, I received a letter from Proto, which I've also attached to your staff report this evening. William conducted the research that you asked for, so I'm going to turn it over to him to summarize the information he found out.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager, Finance Director, Don Hudson. And good evening, council. It's great to be with you this evening. So as mentioned, I got to do some of the research around private property impoundment, which we're going to talk a little bit more about this evening. So I went ahead and reviewed municipal codes of several neighboring and comparator cities, which showed that most cities do not regulate private property impoundment in the ways that Tuolton does. However, Tuolton is not alone in that. So before I go any further, I just want to remind council of, I keep using this term, private property impoundment. So this refers to toes that are ordered by a private entity, generally maybe something like a parking garage owner, manager, or a parking lot owner, towing private vehicles from their property. So we reviewed 11 neighboring and comparator cities and found that they do not regulate private parking impoundment fees. Those include cities like Tiger, Beaverton, and Lake Oswego, as well as several others. And you'll find those in Table Two of the staff report. However, as I mentioned, while most cities do not regulate private property impoundment, Tuolton is one of four that do. So the other three that do are the cities of Portland, Gresham, and Fairview. And you'll find information on their rates there in Table One. And I'll take a moment just to orient folks that table briefly. So if you want to take a look at Table One there, you'll notice that the types of fees that are charged are listed in the leftmost column. Those fees include hookup fees, which include dispatch and labor involved in hooking up a vehicle to a tow truck, involves towed mileage fees covering transportation of a towed vehicle to a tow lot, lean filing fees, which are generally charged after a vehicle has been stored by a towing company for five days or more, release at seams or drop fees, some jurisdictions call them drop fees, and those cover fees if a vehicle has been hooked up, but the towing didn't actually begin. Storage fees covering the tow company's costs to store the vehicle, as well as additional fees, which for the city of Tuolton includes an after-hours release fee for vehicles released outside of business hours. You'll also note there that you'll see some fees are divided by class. That is based upon the gross vehicle weight of the vehicle being towed. Most vehicles fall in Class A, so that's up to 10,000 pounds in gross vehicle weight. Class B is 10,000 to 20,000, and Class C is 20,000 and above. So as you look at Table One, you'll notice we have Portland, Gresham, Fairview, and Tuolton moving left to right, and the rates that are proposed by Beaverton Towing on the far right there. So that's what we have for the council. And I want to see if council has any questions or follow-ups.
Questions? Because President Pratt.
I want to understand why there's only this four cities that impose these rates. What's the logic behind imposing these rates as opposed to all the other cities that don't to start?
I think we'd have to bring some further research back to council on that. But I can say other cities have more to do with parking, where they might have a parking division, whereas we rely more on private.
Private. I was on council when we did this. It was to protect the residents of Tuolton from being gouged on PPI toes, which are private property toes. Those cities that don't have regulations, the towers decide what the rates are, and it's the wild, wild west. Whereas when you have this, at least there's a fee schedule, and that's the reason behind it. Counsel Reyes.
Are we getting any, do we charge them for doing anything here in our community or any fees like that? Like, are we charging these two companies to do service or business here?
Sure. So tow companies pay for their business licenses, but beyond that, all the fees that are paid are paid by the vehicle owner to the towing company and don't come straight to the city.
Because the way the, I used to do this for the city of Portland. So let's say you're an apartment building owner, you contract with a towing company, you tell those vehicles that park, you know, at your apartment complex illegally. So it's basically an agreement between the property owner and the towing company.
Are any of the cities getting any kind of fees for doing business there besides the license? Like extra fees for driving on the roads or anything like that? Do we know that?
Yeah. The only example I found, Counsel Reyes, is in Portland, there's a city service fee that's charged. That's the only fee I have on this schedule that's charged directly and then goes to the city as opposed to a private towing company.
Other questions? Or discussion?
Discussion. So when I look at this, it looks like we're kind, I mean, it's kind of amazing these rates were set that long ago, and they're kind of in the middle of what the other cities are charging. And then what Beaverton Towing is proposing seems a little out of range of that to me. But is there a way to, I mean, personally, I think they're fine where they're at. They're right in the middle. But is there a way, like, I get that costs go up. Is there a way to, like, inflation adjust these or just allow them to come back in the future, I guess? I mean, they should, they have a right to, you know, run a business, but I don't think we need to be, you know, allowing much higher fees than everybody else either.
There's nothing in the ordinance at this point that allows for any kind of adjustments except for you directing staff to bring forward an ordinance with changes.
Okay.
So if you wanted to do either some kind of indexing or to make any changes, that's the direction we're looking for this evening, and we would come back with those changes. But there's not anything in the ordinance to do that right now.
Okay. So I'd be interested to hear what.
Counsel Sacco.
I have a couple of questions. So how many towing companies operate in Tuolton? And this is one of how many?
Ten.
Ten. And so it's one out of 10, and this is the only company that has brought this forward?
With just one letter of support from Proto.
With just one letter of support. Okay. I mean, I think that, I mean, it's been over 10 years since their rate adjustment, so I think that there might be, it looks just by these numbers that there could be adjustments for some of these categories, maybe not all the categories. But I am in, I mean, I guess I'm in support in keeping the regulation that was put in place for those reasons, to protect any price gouging. I think that there could be some adjustments here, again, without, you know, any adjustment since 2013, seems that it might be time to take a look at it and make some adjustments.
Counsel Reyes.
Yeah, my, this is me. I think that even if it was 2013, $175,000 back then, it seems reasonable what it is now, and I feel like I've seen some abuse that this can lead towards. I mean, I was, I went through every single line, and it's just the pricing just jumps really, really high. It's not like you're, you're not talking about 5% or like 3% or 10%. It's like double at times or even double plus, you know? So it's like, I think it's still very fair to this day, the prices that they were set in 2013. I also would like to protect those workers or families that are struggling. So I think I'm not, well, I'm not in favor of doing this, to be honest.
Others? Counsel Gonzalez.
So good, Counsel Reyes, thank you for that. That's a very good point. So 10 years ago, these would have been very exorbitant because these seem very reasonable right now. When I compare it against Portland, which Portland is very fee happy with anything they can do, and they're only charging 196 for a Class A, and we're 175, and then it goes up from there, I, this is very reasonable, plus being only, it's only one company. One company is asking for this. I think it's going to be a no for me. I know we're not voting yet, but I'm not going to support any increases at this time. They can revisit with us at a different time.
Counsel Hillier.
So I think a lot of times people post prices and have prices to try to encourage a behavior or, you know, encourage people to not do a behavior or do a behavior, right? Like, so I, $175 today is still a lot of money in my, in my pocket, so I can understand why maybe some of the bigger classes of bigger vehicles we may want to consider, but I would not be in favor of changing anything for the Class A or even very minimal Class B if we decided to move forward with something. Because I do understand wanting to run a business, but I also think that, and I think the balance of a price has to be to encourage or discourage a behavior, and so I do appreciate that. But I also don't want our residents and business owners to be gouged by, you know, a fee, because it would be set for every towing company, not just the one, right? It would be our ordinance, so.
I agree with most of the, the majority of the sentiment that we've heard this tonight. I mean, asking for rates that are above what the city of Portland is, forget it. No way. And maybe focusing on Class A toes, your passenger vehicles, maybe a minor increase, but nothing substantial. As Counsel Gonzalez said, we're pretty close to what they're getting for the city of Portland right now. A few bucks maybe, but what they're requesting, no way. It's way too much. They're requesting pretty much above what Portland pays, and that's, that's, that's a definite no for me. So if they want to come back, adjust these requests, keep it in line with what we're saying tonight about Class As, staying pretty where they're at, understanding that the bigger vehicles probably do cost more, but I'm inclined to say just leave what it is right now unless they come back and maybe have a few extra towers that they can all agree on a price that is fair. But I don't want to raise towing fees on people because I know when people get their private impound tow, it's never just 250. The fees, everything rack up, and sometimes you're into it for 500 bucks to get your car back because you parked illegally at a planned pantry. And folks, it makes people irate, and so I want to make sure these rates are as fair as possible for both our, the towers and for our residents without them being gouged. So what do you need from us further than that?
What we'll do is we'll reach back out to Beaverton Towing and let them know the discussion this evening and let them know if they would like to put forward a more reasonable request in the words of the council, that we'll be more than happy to bring that back.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is that the consensus? Because I would like to say it's just a solid no.
Okay.
So are we devoting that we're going to allow them at round two to come back to us, take more staff time and all this stuff, when I don't think none of us have any appetite for this kind of increases at this time? So can I get clarity on that?
I'm a no, completely no. I think that, I think it's fair, the inflation, no, no, that, but also people are experiencing layoffs, and there's a lot going on right now that I, I mean, people have not received their income in a little while, so I, I will say no.
Okay.
So that's.
I think I might be somewhere in the middle where, I mean, if we just say a flat-out no, we might get additional folks, these people might go back and get additional companies to back them and come back. I would be more inclined to look at the schedule that was provided and make some adjustments based on where we, where we look at, where we are, you know? Maybe there's a bigger gap between where we are compared to some other cities. Again, yeah, probably not touching Class A because it seems like we're pretty close there. But I don't know that, just allowing them sort of an open slate to say, come back with a different proposal, but maybe this is where we'll meet you. This is what we're willing to do at this time, and that might alleviate some of the back and forth.
I guess I'm closer to where Counsel Sacco's at. But I'm more like, I want justification, I mean, we're right in the middle range here, so I want justification if it's a Class C or whatever of what their costs are and why, you know, we should consider it, not just because they asked.
Counsel Hillier.
I also think that we haven't heard from the people who are calling the tow companies. Are they having people not come out and tow for them because of the prices? I mean, is there an issue for our business owners? I haven't heard from any of them, so I don't know that that is a problem. So if, if nine of the 10 want to continue doing business in Tuolton for this rate, or if we looked at Class B and C and maybe even considered, you know, a partial bump like towards, you know, Gresham, for instance, and not even that high maybe for B or C, but consider something. I mean, I can see that, but I just don't know that we've heard from our businesses that it's a problem to get cars towed, so I don't know why we would make any changes. So maybe there's some information that we just don't know or I don't know. So that would be a gap for me.
Excuse me. So I got two definite no's. So it may be something, if you can consolidate the message in that you've got, you know, several members of council, it's going to be hell no, no matter what you send to us, but we're listening, we're willing to listen to minor increases, but with justification of those increases and only on the heavier vehicles. And if they want to go through all that, then it's up to them to roll the dice and come back and see if we're amenable.
And I would like to hear from the businesses too, so if you can collect data from businesses.
You see the, you see the towing signs around town, so you know who's, who's using who, and maybe you contact a couple of the apartment complexes and the bar owners who might be using them and see, are you having a tough time getting a tow? And if not, then like you're saying, it's probably not an issue.
So just.
Because again, we don't want you to spend a lot of time on this.
Well, we already have spent time on this. And I, so I guess I just want to make sure that, that majority of the council wants us to go do a survey of businesses, number one. Number two, like, do you want, I hear not a lack of clarity, I hear a lack of clarity about whether we require the tow companies to come forward or whether we look at the rates and propose something that is, that bring forward something that is more in line with the others, or if it's leave it alone and maybe revisit it in a year.
Well, no, I don't want you coming back with a new proposal. I don't think it's on us to deal with this any further. I am really interested in what Counsel Hillier said, though, because if it's, if it's, and I know there's an issue with towing those RVs, and I don't know how this fits into all this, because that's a whole different ballgame. And that is expensive for the towing companies from what I understand, but they also charge to.
That's through our police contract.
Oh, okay. So that's a different issue.
That's a different issue.
But this, it is, I think that's an important, I'm torn because I don't want you spending a lot of staff time, but then that's like an important piece of information.
Can you, I'm sorry, what important piece of information are we looking for?
If, if the companies in town are, or the businesses in town are having trouble getting a towing company to come out when they need them.
I don't think we've ever heard of a problem ever. And if we have 10 companies, it kind of creates a bit of a competitive environment. We have one company asking for an increase. I'm willing to kick this down on the road for another four years, but, okay, but I'll go, I'll go a year, and we can, we visit it, but.
Yeah, I don't know if, my understanding, and I don't know if this is for fact, but my understanding is that most property owners have a contract or an agreement with a particular tow company. So it's not that they're calling upwards of many and trying to find one. That could occur, but in order to have that agreement to be able to tow off private property, you have to have, a company has to have a license within 20, and we have 10 companies that have current licenses. Where they're towing from and how many, that I don't have information because we, we don't get that and we don't keep that information.
Counsel Sacco.
I'm okay with siding with the no on this if it's going to, if we're not all in consensus, because I think that there's higher priorities. And also that unless it's causing major issues, then, and we can't, you know, maybe all agree on a path forward right now, that then it's not, not going to be a priority. And I'm okay with changing my outlook to not at this time.
Yeah, ditto. I mean, if we're not hearing from businesses, to me, there isn't a problem, I guess is what I, how I probably should have phrased it. I don't, if, if the businesses start coming to us because they can't get contracts, then I think we have a discussion, whenever that is, if it's one year or two years or whatever it is, so.
All right.
I'm good with that, too.
What we said before, rip up and leave it be.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks for the research, though. It was very helpful. All right. All right. So that took way shorter than we thought, which is nice. So that brings us to agenda review, city manager's report, and roundtable. Tonight, I've got Counsel Sacco is up for the Pledge of Allegiance. Counsel Gonzalez has asked to do the Small Business Saturday Proclamation, and I gave that to him. And there's no other proclamations, so we'll go ahead and we'll do, we'll start off with the city manager's report and then jump over to the roundtable, and then we'll start with Counsel Gonzalez once the city manager is done.
Wonderful. Well, I missed the last meeting, so thanks to Dawn for covering for me. I really appreciate it. I was attending the annual International City Managers Conference, which was in Tampa. It's always an important time for me to get together with colleagues from around the world. A couple of highlights I just wanted to call out. I went to this session called 13 Ways to Kill Your Community, and it's based on a book by that name, and the author is from Canada, but he's done a lot of work in the US. And the 13 things that he listed, I was, as I sat there and listened to him, I was thinking of how proud I am of Tuolton, and a couple that came to mind, I, I'm happy to send all 13 to you, but one was forget the quality, forget the water, quality and quantity. And he brought up Flint, Michigan, and, and other places that where you forget that water is really the most important thing that a city provides, right? If you don't have water quantity and quality, like, you don't have business, you don't have economic development, you don't, you can't flush your toilets. And so I, I take great pride in, you know, our water contract with Portland, but also like how we run the water and approving the Water Master Plan and how much we pay attention to the water here. Don't attract business. And I think that Tuolton has been, you know, just hiring Sid and, and over the years, our economic development program and the businesses that we've attracted here in Tuolton, I just felt really proud about. And don't engage the youth. And I feel really proud about, you know, our YAC and the student members on committees and the, the ways that we engage our youth. And so just wanted to highlight that session. Another session that I went to, well, a keynote, was Arthur Brooks. He's a columnist and author, and he wrote this book, Love Your Enemies: How Decent People Can Save America From the Culture of Contempt. And he made this compelling case that local government is where it's at and that we can impact the dialogue and the civility and that it takes warm-heartedness on both sides, on all sides. And I was just, I, I came away very inspired by his talk and happy to send you his TED Talk because it was, it was very compelling. So aside from that, we had an election on Tuesday, of course, and a thank you to the Tuolton voters. The library in particular is a beneficiary of that vote with passage of the library levy, but also the public safety levy passed as well. We're in the final stages of hiring a planning manager. Akula's excited about that. That's been a big hole since she came on board, and we're excited to bring somebody good on. Veterans Day is tomorrow. City offices are closed. The library is open, but it closes early at 6:00. Thank you to all the veterans for their service. The River Park CIO, Community Involvement Organization Annual Meeting is this Thursday at 6:30 here in this room. And then on Saturday, we have yard debris drop-off at Grimms from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. You need to show proof of residence in Tuolton and bring canned goods on our, if you have any question, on our website. We show what the Tuolton Food Pantry is looking most for. So we always end up collecting quite the haul for Tuolton Food Pantry. So thank you for the, allowing me to make that update.
On the council, so I attended the Metro Mixer for Westland. That was a lot of fun. I might have already talked about that, but also attended the State of the County over in Clarkamas County, Clarkamas Community College. That was quite fascinating to see all the progress that the county is working on and the things they're looking to do. It was nice to hear that they were pursuing donating money because of the snaps. They did that, which was fantastic. Very good outlook for the state of the county right now. It's pretty amazing what they got going on and how they want to work with the cities and things like that, so I was very excited to attend that. The Veterans Breakfast, that was just amazing. I love the stories that were told. It's just so inspiring. I was sitting with a gentleman who, after listening to our Veterans Breakfast, he asked if he can donate money to the city. So you might find somebody coming in here to try to donate money. I don't even, I couldn't tell them where to go. I just said, you come to the city, talk to Cheryl Lynn, and she can put you plugged in on where the money is needed. But he was, said he was going to make a sizable donation, so he was very, he almost was tearful when he was sharing this to me. So that was very nice. That's all I got.
Counsel Sacco.
Thank you. On the 28th, was it the 20th, 28th, I believe, we had the, the CAC meeting, and we reviewed Michelle with Seville's presentation and her findings, which she will bring them here on the 8th of December. So excited for everybody to see the results of that presentation and all of the community's input consolidated into the findings, which was really exciting to see. We started prioritization. I think we have some more work to do there, but I'm really excited for everybody to see that work. And that's the only meeting that I have. Thank you.
Counsel Hillier.
Thank you, Mayor. I did not have any formal meetings, but I did attend the League of Oregon Cities Municipal I did not have any formal meetings, but I did attend the League of Oregon Cities Municipal Fundamentals Training, the four and a half hour training. It was, I always learn something. It's kind of incredible, but public meetings, I did those sorts of things. I also attended the Veterans Breakfast, which was wonderful, and enjoyed the Art in the Burbs event that the Foundation for Tiger Tuolatin Schools put on that funds the art programs in all, what, 17 of our schools? So that was fun. Thank you.
Councilor Reyes. I was on vacation for two weeks, so my meetings were very small, thankfully. It was a nice break. But one meeting I had was the Metro Mayor's Consortium on the 30th. I skipped Council Pratt, I'm sorry. I just felt a poke, I'm like, oh, yeah.
Go ahead, finish up.
No, you go ahead.
Are you sure?
Sure.
Well, I thought you could go first since we do some repeat meetings.
Could probably say the same thing, yeah?
Yeah. Okay, let me see. Okay, so I went to, on the 29th, I went to the Metro Regional Partners Workshop on garbage and recycling fees, and I know it probably is in my wheelhouse, but it was really pretty fascinating. And what was really cool is that somebody from Metro mentioned when we argued with Republic and how, you know, about their fees and that. And a part of it was they brought in a CPA that specializes in this area and just seemed to really look into what they're charging, like even the admin fees, you know, like they run things through for foreign contracts and other things, so you have to really like dig in, was the suggestion. But then they also explained like how a lot of, like they're tipping fees because of the wages they pay, and then this one shocked me, a new electric vehicle, garbage truck $1.2 million, and a non-electric one, you know, only, you know, $750,000, $800,000, so. So there are some legitimate costs, but it was just really interesting to learn more of the details and the processes. That same day, I went to Metro, creating our Shared Future Forum, which is, it, it was a lot of, we did a group thing, and we had some really good speakers, but then it was a group thing, and that whole idea was, you know, if you work together collaboratively, you can have a bigger voice, was the gist of it. Then we had our, the Community Action Committee meeting with Michelle, like Councilor Sacco said, and so I'm excited that everybody's going to get to hear that report fairly soon. Then I went to a CCIO meeting with the CCIO, so the Central Committee, and they brought in the two Attorney Generals from, you know, DA's, sorry. The DA's from Washington County and from Clackamas County, Wentworth. They talked about retail theft. It was really informative, and the, the big thing that I got out of it was that these retail establishments, you know, it's, it, sometimes it doesn't seem cost-effective to report people, but if they don't report people, the police, they don't have that data point to know it's happening, and then you're not tracking the people that are doing this over and over. And the other thing was that some of them buy these proprietary software cameras, and you can only watch it on their system, so the police are sitting there with the phone trying to record, which isn't good evidence for court. So it, it was really pretty interesting. Then I went to the event at Central Cultural out in Cornelius, and it was an emergency meeting on the ICE activities, and there was some pretty disturbing testimony. What I got out of it is that, well, half of the ICE arrests that have happened in the states happen, have happened in Washington County. It's important, if you can, to film evidence and that, that people that might end up in this situation, try to make sure that you have at least two or three other people in your community that know facts about you, like your date of birth, your address, and your family members, so, you know, you can be located and connected with your family. And then the last was they gave a couple, the ACLU and ECO, which I don't know what that is, but a couple groups that they, they offer legal support for people in these situations because, and a lot of people, people, according to them, they are here legally, but they're being arrested, and it's quite a process to get released. Of that, good thing. Then the Vets Breakfast was wonderful, as always. And then I went to C4, and instead of having a regular Clackamas County Coordinating Committee meeting, it was held in Canby. And then they had people from their staff go over their housing, how they're trying to develop the housing and work within the parameters of the state mandate. They talked about, they have their own bus system, and they talked about how they broke off from TRIMET and worked through that and where they're going with that, which was pretty interesting. And then their economic development person, Jamie Stickle, she, she was a lot of energy and fun, and her, her motto is WIT, whatever it takes. And then lastly, we had our key leaders meeting with Tuolatin together, and Tiger turns the tide, and I have to say, I, I still am so impressed. These kids that had a day off for school were at police station at 7:30 this morning. That's it.
Now it's my turn. Sorry about that. Well, like I said, my list is short, short. So the Metro Mayor's Consortium on the 30th, we nailed down the legislative priorities for 2026 with the session coming here pretty soon. Mayor Wilson of Portland gave an update on ICE activity and the facility in Portland plus in their area because they have a whole office stood up in the city of Portland for this. No, no surprise there where they're getting daily updates and information that they're feeding out to cities in the area. And then Mayor Rosner of Sherwood is in charge of the OGEC. OGEC is going through reviewing their, you know, rules, the ones we all hate that they came up with that make no sense. They're allowing the MMC to have representatives in the meetings, and so that they are hearing directly from those folks impacted on the, you know, the realistic implications of what they rule. So more to come on that. They just started meeting. The Veterans Breakfast was fantastic. I want to thank Sarah and Marilyn, Dale Potts for helping organize it, the Kiwanis for providing the kitchen staff to do it, and finally Lamb Research had about 10, 15 volunteers that helped serve the breakfast, so thanks for all on that. And then finally, I just want to mention at the Communities that Care Key Leaders Meeting this morning, that Council Pratt is now the vice chair of the committee. And so very much grateful that she stepped up and will be my vice chair for the next year. That's all I have. Anything else? So we're done a little bit early, so we'll go ahead and conclude this work session, and we'll reconvene with our regular city council meeting at 7:00.